Okay. One quick question about something that we're voting on later in the meeting. In regards to the catch basins for the elementary school. Do you know why they are at the middle school right now? Wouldn't they? Was there a reason why they delivered them to the middle school and not the elementary school?
Yeah, that's where, that's where most of the materials were staged for the project. And when we terminated the work at the elementary school, anything that was still over at that site, the contractor moved to the middle school because we had just had more property to use and security.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
I have a question on the schedule. When you project the December 28 date, does that take into effect the items that are, that you don't have a delivery date for? Are they, are they within that?
No, and I'm glad you asked that for clarity because, no, the December 28th date projects everything that we do know about and is in contract. We're chase, we're still chasing some material deliveries for some recently awarded change orders. And there's still some proposals outstanding that we do not have a confirmed schedule for. So, no, I can't make up a date for those items till we get the information.
Are those items, is, is work contingent on those items arriving or are those equipment and furnishings?
I'm glad you asked. Substantial completion technically is not contingent on those items. However, the district has been pretty committed to make sure the building was, is 100% constructed, including any additional items. So that's the, that's the balancing act we're trying to do is get everything to, you know, appropriate certificate of occupancy. But we want to insert or inject the added items before the building's turned over for full occupancy. And we've been advising, it's, it's not a bad plan that you want to have everything done, done before you move in.
All right. Good. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Steve?
I have, this is Steve. I have nothing further to add to that unless anyone has any questions from a design standpoint of anything you've, you've seen there. As Kevin mentioned, the site is coming together and the second and third floors, I know you've toured and I believe there's a tour coming up. So we'll be available for any, any, any questions on what you see there. But if there are any questions tonight, I'd be happy to, happy to take those.
Anyone have questions for Steve? No, I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
The next presentation for the board tonight is about the digital libraries. And Megan Pilati will be telling us about those.
Yeah, because I can't share my screen.
So we need to change the order.
Oh, all right. What would you like next? We're going to change the order.
So we have, I know this is a little out of order, but we're waiting on Megan to get her presentation ready. With us tonight, I know we're going to talk about this. Mr. Bogart's going to have a discussion with us, but tonight Abby Juwannik is with us. She's a student rep. She's a senior here. I believe she wears number one on our soccer team. And she and her teammates did a fantastic job Saturday. Abby, shake your head if that's you, number one on soccer. Can she hear me?
I don't think so.
Maybe she's not number one. I don't know. But Mr. Bradley's with us as well. We're trying to, Abby, how are you doing? All right. She raised her hand.
I'm good. How are you?
Very good. Are you number one on our soccer team? Yes, she is.
Yes, I am.
I thought. So she and her teammates did a fantastic job Saturday evening. I won't name the opponent, but they won 6-0 in a, in a downpour. So they really did a great job communicating. But Abby is somebody that Mr. Bradley feels a very good representation of North Rose Wilka High School. So we're going to ask that she give the Board of Education a report. We think that she's going to be an exemplar for the Board of Education to model a lot of student reports after. So Abby, I'm going to turn it over to you. Let you go ahead and share the, with the board, your perspective on how the first five weeks of school have gone and anything you wish to share from your point of view. I don't know. Abby, can you, it might be freezing eyes. Go ahead. If you have anything to present, go ahead. It's your, the floor is yours if you want to present to the board. Looks like she's, her screen might be frozen. Technology, isn't it great? So when Abby comes back, we'll let her go ahead and get started. I think her screen's freezing on her right now.
Shall we move on and let Linda tell about the legislative, the four county legislative?
Yeah, that, that would be great. And then when Abby comes back, we'll fit her back in. So I think we're running into some technical difficulties this evening, but yeah. Mrs. Agner's ready to roll. Go right ahead.
Okay. Okay. Last Saturday, October the 10th, the four county legislature, our legislative committee met again and we had discussions about the proposals for NISP voting at the end of the month. We did discuss a lot of issues that we felt were critically important, one being the issues of funding cuts, reserve issues, access to the internet and social emotional needs of both students and adults. Our major focus as a legislative committee for four county is equity and funding. And in the discussion, we talked about equity as it relates to equity in terms of ability to succeed, but also equity for outcomes for students across the board. Because the way things are structured now, of course, we strongly feel there is not a level of equity across state. We are also looking to organize a Zoom meeting with the area two region Norwood. And then we would also like to have the state legislators involved. It would be a short meeting because it's not easy for folks to have a longer meeting, but we're going to be working on that to give input and our emphasis as a rural area to them. We'll be meeting again next month, but that's what we covered on Saturday. Great. I appreciate Linda representing us at four county legislative. That's a very important group of people who are working hard for us at the, at the government levels. And a lot of it deals with funding, but a lot of it is policy coming out of New York and the feds. So thank you, Linda. I don't see Abby back yet. John, pardon? Oh, Megan is ready. All right. We'll go back then to Megan. She's got her computer stuff organized. Thank you.
Okay. So I wanted to talk about digital libraries tonight and how North Rose Wilka is serving our virtual students. So an important thing to consider is that when I talk about virtual students, I'm actually talking about every student in the district because even our students who attend four days a week are virtual one day a week. Then our students who are here two days a week are still virtual three days a week. And then we also have our fully virtual students that are five days a week. So what virtual learning can look like for our students at North Rose Wilka is that teachers are instructing students directly through Zooms. Students can watch videos of their teachers or other videos that cover the content. Playlists have been created by teachers where students have must dos and may do's that are made up of activities and different work pieces. And then there's digital platforms where students can practice skills. So all of these different things are considered pieces of digital libraries. The reason that we wanted to create digital libraries for our students is because it really levels the playing field for students with different home circumstances, especially the things that they can log in at a time that works for them and be able to participate in those things. They don't have to have a certain time that they can get on Zooms if it doesn't work with their schedule at home. The digital libraries provide instruction and practice and they're created as a part of planning. So they're available whenever it's needed. So if we have students that are primarily in school, we have digital libraries to fall back on. If we see what's happening around us with other districts that we have to all go virtual, we have things ready for them. It allows teachers to participate in collegial sharing and reduces multiple teachers creating the same instruction and provides consistent learning across a grade level. And then it also helps us protect teachers a little bit from one teacher being compared to another so that if they're using similar materials, we can't have parents saying that their student got one experience where another student got a different experience. It creates a level, a level playing field for all students, no matter what teacher they have. So I worked with leadership council to develop components that we felt were important to be part of a playlist at North Rose Wilka. We talked about all activities being connected to the standards. We wanted learning targets and/or objectives included. So teach, students understood the why of what they were doing. We wanted must do's and may do's. So the must do's are things that students must engage in. And then the may do's are choices that they can pick to do certain things. We wanted them to include meaningful and appropriate choices for students. And we wanted to include an opportunity for students to reflect on their learning and how that format worked for them. So I do have some examples. So you can see at the different grade levels, what the playlists or digital libraries might look at, look like. So this is an ELA. Go back up. And you can see here it's organized for students by the day of the week. They can click on it. Oh, you can't see that?
Nurse didn't move.
Hmm. Let's see if I can share that. No. Okay. Okay. So I have some great examples linked in here that I'll have to share with you to look at. I did. It didn't work. Let me try a different thing. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Wednesday.
So you can see that there's different file cabinets that allow students to go into that day and see what they have. An important thing that we're asking students do, to do is to fill out a Google form, which they would click and the virtual attendance would take them right there to fill that out for attendance for the day. Did you see that change? Okay. So I clicked on the day of the week and then it took them to the learning target of what they needed to accomplish by the end of the day. And then it has you read a poem and use the tone words to identify the tone. And then you can see there's a link to the poems there and then they can discuss their answers in the form, which then goes back to the teacher. So that's just an example of an activity that a student could do for English nine. And then I'm going to switch over to another one. And hope that you can see it. I'll do an elementary one. Did that change? Okay. So I need to reshare. Okay. Can you see that? Okay. So this is more of an elementary style board. Our teachers have had a really fun time using bit mojis to engage students that look like them. And as you can see, there's different tickets here that take them to different activities they can do. And so you can see there's a must do there. There's online games, videos to watch. There's iXL, which is that digital platform practice. There's online lessons and then a choice board. So here they have activity where they have to pick two to practice sight words using different online platforms. They can listen to a song or a story that goes along with what they're learning. And then there's a choice board. I don't know if it's going to take you there or not. Hopefully it does. Yes. Where they can pick different things that they would do. So it gives you an idea of a high school version and an elementary version of a digital choice board. Do you have any questions about anything?
So when a child gets online, they, they go directly to the library? Is that what they do?
So the teachers have Google Classroom set up. And so the Google classrooms, the students have access to get in there and teachers can put pretty much anything in there. So they can have that, that digital library linked in there. They can write little notes to their students. There's a calendar in there that they can put assignments on so they know what's coming. So it's really like a whole classroom online and it organizes everything for them.
So do children who are doing online learning exclusively, then do they zoom in to the, to the classroom with the teacher as well?
They don't. We have teachers that, especially at the elementary school, we have teachers that are dedicated just to those students. So those teachers are doing a Zoom lesson to the students at home. And then for the upper levels, it's more of a mixture of them going on and doing like the playlists and those sort of things with a mix of office hours where they can connect with teachers.
I see. Great. Jason? Not hearing you, Jason.
I had unmuted myself. I don't have a question, Megan, but I just wanted to congratulate you and the staff on, on this uphill battle. My, my daughter is very engaged and I know that that can be tough through a video format and you guys are really stepping up to the occasion and I really appreciate it.
Our teachers have been working really hard this summer and throughout the beginning of the school years, the school year to keep on developing those digital pieces. And we're encouraging them that as they're planning their lessons to be creating those so that they have them. So if at any moment we do all go virtual, then it's not going to be reactionary like we had to be in the spring, but we can be responsive to students' needs and provide those for them.
And more than that, I mean, it's, I mean, putting the information on there seems like it'd probably be easy. But to make it engaging is a whole different level of, of, I guess, love. You know what I mean? And the, just the colors and the formats and the, and the verbiage is just, it's, it's inviting for students and I, and I appreciate it. And I know everyone else does as well.
It's so true. And it's really, we've seen the teacher's creativity come out in that because, I mean, you could have a digital library that's just a bunch of links, but you're right, that would not be engaging for students at all. So when you see the little classrooms with the bit emojis, it's exciting for kids.
Yeah. And they feel like they're connecting with their teacher a little bit more too, I think, with those. Anyone else comments, question? Ooh, lots of them. Linda, why don't you start? We'll go right down the row. I was wondering, I know that it sounds as if for the elementary kids on the Wednesday, is it a total class connection for that where they can communicate with the teacher and classmates?
So for our virtual students, they have a morning meeting every morning. So they're seeing their classmates, their virtual classmates and that teacher. For our students that are in school the other four days a week, they're doing more of like the online playlists. But then they have teachers that can do office hours with them to help them two hours on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Yes. How do students get feedback from the teacher or graded or said you should do this better?
Yes. So they're providing their assignments through Google Classroom and teachers can make comments on that. They can, we have different systems like Kami. They can write up on like markup things that students have submitted. But then also some of those digital platforms, teachers can see how students have done with like an accuracy level for answering those questions. And then like do reteaching based on that.
And another question. How many students does a teacher have? Let's say the ELA three, yeah, the third grade. The students in front of them versus the virtual five days a week?
So the teachers that are here have no more, or typically no more than 10 students in front of them at a time. And then at the same time, they would have 10 kids at home that are part of their class because there are only half the classes that are given time. Teachers that are fully, they have the fully virtual students. We've capped that off at about 20 students that a virtual teacher would have for fully virtual students.
And that's at one time though?
It depends. They do morning meeting altogether, but then they break it down into smaller groups when they're working on skills, depending on what students need.
Okay.
There were more hands. Paul?
Yeah. Thank you. I have two questions. So if it, so let's say I'm, I'm, I'm a Monday, Tuesday student and I'm home on Thursday. So do I log in at the beginning of the day and do I watch the teacher teach that day only I'm just at home?
No. So we are not doing streaming into live classes right now. So the student would get on Google Classroom and see what is assigned and work through playlists on their days that they're home. And then they would have a time that they can connect with their teachers through office hours.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. So my second question is, and this may be premature being where we are in the year, but so for the students that are taking AP courses, this, this whole process, we believe is going to end up with a AP test at the end of the year?
We do. Yes. We have teachers that are definitely covering all of those classes for students, no matter their situation, if they're here or at home.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Megan.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. That's very informative and we're happy to know what's going on there. And we know it's a lot of work. We, we are very appreciative of all the work the teachers did this summer in preparation for this. They were really ahead of the game. So good for them and good for our kids. Abby's back. Where is Abby? I don't see her.
She's there.
Hi.
Hi, Abby.
Abby, do you want me to give that fantastic introduction again or are you ready to just roll?
Sorry. You keep glitching out. I can't really hear you. Can you repeat that?
Go ahead and, why don't you go ahead and present?
Okay.
Perfect.
So I'm Abby Juwannik. I'm a senior this year. And I guess I'll just let you know what it's like going to school during COVID-19 and everything. So first of all, I want to give a huge thank you to all of the counselors and staff for figuring out what I'm sure was a scheduling nightmare and getting us to school a few days a week. I've talked to a bunch of other students from different school districts and even students outside of our school district, places like Penfield. And from what I've heard, it seems like NRW has definitely done one of the best jobs during this whole thing. Um, as far as how the school year looks, it's definitely very different. The biggest difference is the virtual days. So as you guys know, we're going to, we're virtually on three days of the week. And on those days, we just go onto Google Classroom, as Mrs. Pelioti was saying, and complete the assignments that our teachers gave us. And it's very difficult, I think, to manage your time well and get everything done because you have nobody pacing you and you just get like a million emails in the morning and then have to slowly work on throughout the day. And when we're in class, it was actually a pleasant surprise how normal it is. First day, I thought it was going to be very like futuristic, I'll see glass and we talked, we did last, it feels almost like a normal school year. Everyone's wearing masks in the whole, in the classroom, we can take them off. And there's just the same sense of camaraderie and friendship that there's always been at NRW, which is really great. And the best thing for me this year by far has been sports starting up. So they started up about three weeks ago and games started about a week and a half ago. And it's amazing to be out on the field, you know, to be playing sports I love, hanging out for my kids. And like, we're all just so blessed that we get to play, even if you have to wear masks and even though we can only invite two people to each game. It's absolutely amazing. Another huge positive is I thought this year that clubs were having, have an extracurricular clubs. But about a week ago, I got an email from a bunch of my clubs, like National Honor Society, Student Council and Future Business Leaders of America. And they're all starting up again, which again, I'm just super excited about. It seems like we keep adding more of the things that make high school a really enjoyable experience. So I'd say overall, it's definitely not this year that any of us expected or necessarily hoped for. But it's the one we've got and I think it could be a lot worse. I think we're all just so grateful to be back in person on the days that we are. I know throughout March through June, it was a big struggle for a lot of kids and for me to just all of a sudden be complete virtual, have no contact with friends, really. Teachers, a lot better this year. And I'm just so thrilled to have sports and clubs starting back up. Just all the things that bring a sense of normalcy to such a crazy time. Do you guys have any questions about how the school year is going?
Thank you, Abby. We're, we're glad that things are going well. And we're glad that you're enjoying getting back to a little bit of normalcy, even though the normalcy may be skewed a bit. Board members, you have comments or questions you'd like to ask Abby? Linda? I just wanted to commend you on how complete you were in your description of everything from academics.
But I can't hear anyone.
You can't? I did unmute. Kudos to you, whether you can hear me or not, but congrats. Can you hear, are you able to hear me, Abby? I think maybe the technology is giving us some issues again. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Abby.
I, I would be back on that, Mrs. Agner, that we will have Abby back. You know, we wanted to start with her tonight. So we felt like she'd be a, a great exemplar for our student body to represent us and to present to all of you. So we absolutely feel like it, it would be a disservice to her if we don't invite her back. And ideally we will have her here in person in the near future so that you can, you know, interact with her and get some more perspective as to what's going on at the high school. So we're really pleased with her and thank her for her time tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to the presentation of the school improvement plan. Thank you. We'll move on to the presentation of the School Improvement Plan, the middle school by Mark Matthews and Brady Farnand. He has a whole team with him. How wonderful.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark. Mark Matthews, the principal at the middle school. And I'm here and happy and pleased to introduce some of the teacher leaders in my school. And also, of course, Dr. Farnand, our assistant principal. We have Ben Stopka. He's been here before to speak with you. Ashley Gersner. We have Jill Ritchie and Kelly Cool. So some of them, the faces are familiar. We're really excited to present to you this evening. Our main focus areas are making learning relevant to our students' lives, to be responsive to our students and to help build relationships among students, also between the school, our staff and our students. So AIMS Web is our most accessible tool of student assessment. You can see that the score ranges across the top, average and above average. We want those numbers to total to 90%. We also want our well above average scores to increase by 10% this year. Math, we use AIMS Web as well. It's a very accessible tool for us. We want our average and above average numbers to total to 90%. And we want to increase our well above average to by 10% as well. The goals and activities that we have set in motion are intended to focus specifically on improving student achievement in these areas.
Our curriculum and professional learning goals are to make sure that we're providing relevant and engaging curriculum to the students. And we want to make sure that we're abandoning what's not working for them. We also want to provide professional development around quality assessments. And we want to make sure that we have common assessments so that we can demonstrate growth of all of our stuff.
As a committee, we want to create a collaborative environment within our community at the school. We have a lot of different teachers with a lot of different strengths and talents. So as a committee, we want to highlight strengths that we have around playlists, pre-assessments and digital libraries and create videos and also meet as a team at grade level, vertically and horizontally to share what we value and then hopefully have teachers collaborate and share with us as well. And we were inspired by the curriculum development and the professional development we had over the summer where we did the asynchronous and synchronous models. So we want to take that and bring it into our curriculum mapping and professional learning throughout the school year.
We want to engage our families as learning partners with us to help us improve student achievement and student outcome. We also hope to highlight our readers and writers. I am highlighting the writing process this year. So for our community, we want to continue to work with parents or students and make sure that they truly see the value in their partnering with us to help their student be successful. So we want to utilize different forums than we normally would have using Zoom, Google Meets or anything that will help them access us much easier. We want to continue to work on promoting the positives when it comes to our students. So really celebrating how hard they're working, that they're showing perseverance in their digital learning as well as their in-person learning. We want to celebrate our students as being leaders, obviously highlight their achievements and effort. So using Facebook, using our district website, all those platforms that parents have easy access to, help us celebrate all the amazing things that our students are doing every day.
So multi-tiered systems of support, we often refer to as MTSS, is making sure that we provide a continuum of support to meet the needs of all of our students. And that would look through both the academic ones as well as social and emotional learning. So we want to be responsive to our students and meet them and make sure that we're providing all students what they need to be successful.
The best way to think about our MTSS system is it's really our engine of responsiveness. Given the impact of the current pandemic on our practices of teaching and learning in the classroom and just being together in the school, it's really important that we be responsive to student need as possible. And that begins with working with teachers to build the digital resource libraries. This Paliati was just speaking about and designing opportunities for staff to participate in high-quality professional development. It's demonstrating, you know, effective instructional practices across the district, K-12. And from an assessment standpoint, it helps for us to begin developing high-quality pre-assessments so that we can be sure that we're being responsive to student needs in the classroom. You know, for a long time, the one-size-fits-all approach dominated. And given our current hybrid schedules and the modified schedules, including all virtual students, it's really of the utmost importance now that we're giving students the opportunity to grow and to establish what it is that they do know and grow from there. And lastly, our MTSS system works on being responsive to our students' social emotional needs as well. And we've done that by clearing the pathway for requests for assistance. So parents as well as, you know, school community members can initiate a request for assistance for any student, for anything that they see as a need. And it immediately triggers a response system from us with an all-hands-on-back approach with our school counselors, administrators, our assessment coordinators and our staff, really working together to make sure that no one falls through the crack at this time.
So we want to make sure that the impact of all our financial decisions are in line with all the initiatives described in the Strategic Action Plan. We also want to make sure that the things that we choose to acquire for our students have a sound basis and reason and data. And that those things are sustainable, that we can use those resources over a long period of time to help the greatest number of students possible. So we want to, we want to model, we want to be a model for fiscal responsibility, and specifically as it relates to our Strategic Action Plan. Every decision that we make should be aligned with the goals that are described there. And so here's staff from a couple of years ago, last day before, last day. We have some different faces, but the spirit's the same. And we're in different places, but the relationships still carry on. And I wanted to see if you had any questions for the school leadership team or me. So feel free to ask away.
Questions? John?
Do you have any specific of how you're getting parents involved? And I'm saying that because today I had to be the teacher or not North Oakville. But I know how hard it is to sit up all day with a virtual student and try to make sense of what's going on.
I think that's a great question. So many families are really trying to support their children at home. I think to the greatest extent possible, you need to be proactive and share as much information as you can. Here's how you do this. Here's how you do that. We also have to be prepared to be responsive. And that means that we share out all the emails of all the teachers in the building. We share all the contact information. And we've shared information, what to do if I have a problem with, I log onto my computer. Here's the phone number you call. Here's if I have a question about meals. Here's the phone number, email that you address that you use. Try to put as many of those structures out there, but always keep it in mind that those, it changes. So we have to be able to respond. That means that parents have to feel like they can contact us and we're going to, we're going to respond and assist them to the greatest extent possible. So I think it's a combination of being proactive, putting some things out there, some resources for parents, but also saying, please contact us if you're having any difficulty. We're here to help you.
Are your teachers getting a number of calls during their office hours?
John, can you one of you please to let the bus, let's hear you?
Are your, are your teachers receiving a lot of calls during office hours? I liked your picture, by the way.
Thanks. So during the office hours, we are responding to our students that we have virtually that day. So we have an open Zoom link, so the kids have access to that link. So like I was chatting with one of my students who had been absent the last class and she just wanted to say hello. And so it's a good way for them to check in with us so we can, you know, be that supportive system for them too. But I've answered math questions, science questions, all kinds of things, either through GoGuardian or through those Zoom links. So the office hours have been really good. And it's great that we have that built into our schedule for when we are with some of our students in person, we can still be supporting our kids that are in. So there's a different teacher at our grade level available each period of the day. So we're, you know, pretty easy to access.
It seems to be more than critical because you could always say, open your computer and do it.
Yeah, and I had a, I had a parent get on Zoom last week and said, okay, she's not going to tell you she's having trouble with this, but she is. You know, we totally understand that and we're here to help in any way that we can. So we just keep doing the same thing that Mr. Matthews said and just keep encouraging parents to reach out to us and we'll help in whatever way we possibly can.
Great.
We also have a parent liaison this year, which is a great resource for us. Yvonne Bishop, she's been wonderful. She kind of works as a man. So a lot of families will reach out to her and just ask for, how do we go through this? How do we do that? There's been times where families have had trouble with hotspots and they didn't have transportation and she'll drive to the house, pick it up and bring it to DL so it can get corrected. So she's a great resource for us as well as being that parent liaison.
She's super great.
She's wonderful.
Jason?
What's the, what's the plan look like for parent-teacher conferences? I know it's a little skewed probably this year. I'm not muted. I'm not muted.
I'm not hearing you.
Yeah, they can hear me. How have you adjusted that for this year? Are you going to have more, less, the same? Because I think that's a, even for the virtual students, that's a good opportunity to pet off any issues that might happen.
I think the nice thing about the platforms we have is that we can have parent-teacher conferences almost anytime, as long as people feel comfortable approaching the teacher, clicking on the Zoom button and talking about what's really happening. As far as scheduling parent-teacher conferences, I mean, I think they're really an ongoing activity. We really want to promote that. Please reach out. Here are office hours. Here's how you can reach us. Here's when. Here's the method. And if you can't, then call this number and that'll take you to my office and I can try to put you in touch with whoever. I think it's more of an ongoing thing as opposed to setting aside specific nights or days for parent-teacher conferences. I think it's, it's been a little more fluid in this environment. And I think that's been working out. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. It does. You're adapting to the situation and that's, and that's what we can hope for.
Really just want to keep that conversation going, I guess.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'm thinking too, that by doing it in that way, anything that's a little problem doesn't get to be a huge problem as time goes on because you're dealing with it in a timely way. So it makes it easier for the student and for you to understand what's going on.
Anyone else? Paul?
Mark, I have three questions. The first one is, you had talked about, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You had the 90% and the 10%, both in math and ELA.
Yes, sir.
And now again, did you say that that was a goal for this year that you wanted to be at 90%?
Yes.
Okay, that answers question number one. Question number two was a slide that Kelly had was community engagement. You can answer it or Kelly, either one, but. So I got a pretty good feel for how we're working with the school, you know, between the school and the families and the students. I really feel good about that. The last word on there was community and I didn't really hear how we were, we were going to attempt to engage the community in our school learning.
Engage community members in our school?
Well, it says in the community, so that's what I was kind of asking us. Okay, how does that work?
I think I see. Really, we're really trying to push our Facebook platform to try and put as many good things out there as possible. I'm, I'm a little bit of a dinosaur when it comes to really working the social media stuff. And I'm learning. And I think actually, I think Kelly really pushed forward a great idea to put a slideshow out there of what specifically our students are doing. Not just say, great job with, you know, great job, you're great, but like being specific. You're being a responsible learner by doing X, Y, Z. So really trying to put those positive things out there more and hoping that we get more likes and more people involved. I keep seeing people are, new people are liking our page, which I like to see. And whether or not it leads to improved communication, we can hope. I do get messages from people that are outside the district every once in a while on Facebook. But really, we want to be open to the community. Parents might have access to like Zoom meetings and things like that. Really get our contact information out there, our number out there so that people can engage with us better. There are lots of community resources that we want to make contact with. I think Yvonne Bishop is a great person, great resource person to help us make those contacts.
Just to piggyback in on that as well, Mr. Statzky. I think you'll notice that before the year started, there were some video vignettes that were put out on the webpage. So between that, we have a school board liaison and Mrs. Reed. But the video vignettes that the middle school has been producing to put their messages out there, I would say we're really being responsive to the community in multiple ways. And in terms of the engagement, I think this presentation tonight shows that. So I think this coupled with the digital libraries, you know, it's a very nice complementary approach to what we're doing and how we're responding to the ever-changing environment of education. You know, those digital platforms, the digital libraries allow families to go to work and log back on at any time to see what their students were assigned for the day. You know, and then the chat box. So if they're in a Zoom meeting, you can communicate directly with your teacher in a private message. You know, you could communicate through traditional means of, and methods through a phone call or an email. But what I would say to the group as a whole is, you know, we're in our infancy as far as where we're going. But if the infancy is any indicator as to how successful we're going to be, I think that you're going to see some great things continue to happen at the middle school level. I think we've seen that through K-12 right now. But we're exploring various platforms and I think many of you started to see the work that our district leaders are putting together with the support of Amanda Renko. And I think you're going to continue to see our brand grow. You're going to see that our product is very polished by the end of the year and that our goals are ambitious as they should be.
Concur, and I, and I think that's wonderful. And Mark mentioned also, and I think it's very difficult right now in our situation with this pandemic, but you also mentioned to try to get some community, you had community resources that you wanted to bring into your school. I heard that. And it's kind of one of the things I was looking for, understanding again, very difficult right now. So again, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, though, that's one of the things that Mrs. Barr has started. Right now, you're going to start to see some of the 21st century programming start to embed itself back in. And some of those extracurriculars through the community are going to start taking shape again. I know Abby mentioned that as well, that that's a part where again, getting people out and restoring as much normalcy as possible.
Another thing that I wanted to highlight, Bridgette and Ms. Palliati have been setting up. Um, we had, there's a work opportunity program for our students and they're eligible from 14 all the way through seniors where they get on the job experience and it's paid through, through a grant. So essentially the student, their, their work is volunteered out to the community and it's paid through a grant. So the, the community member is free labor while the students are getting job experience, they're building skills. Uh, so that's kind of thing that we're starting to kick off. So that we have, uh, uh, someone from BOSI is coming in who's meeting with students and it's more of a mentorship program as well. So that's another thing that we're getting going and I think it's going to be really beneficial for our students.
Love it, love it. I did have one last question, remember I had three? Back to Mark. Um, so do you have adequate resources to do what you're trying to do? I know again, it's a tough situation, you talked about finances. Do you have all the hotspots you need and things like that?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think the, uh, district's been very well prepared, very responsive to families. They send an email, they get one back within an hour usually and inform the family of what's coming.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And thanks, Tina.
Jason, can you unmute, please? Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, just one quick thing, I've been following all three buildings and their social media for years now. And, um, even though you're a self-proclaimed dinosaur when it comes to social media, it's, it really has taken off. And I think that, uh, the ability to do what you do every day with students and then show the community, it's not that you have to do anything different, it's just, it's how you're packaging up, showing the community what you're doing. And I really think you're doing a good job. I mean, you can scroll through Facebook and see a hundred things that are negative, but you get to North Rose Wilkett Middle School or NRE or the high school and it throws a positive in your day. And people will remember that. So even though you might not get the likes that you want or you, at this point in time, just remember that somebody's scrolling through there and you're taking their eyes off a negative and putting it on a positive and directly influencing students. So thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, I think that's a great reminder, I really appreciate you saying that. It's hard to tell sometimes.
No, I know, you get bogged down. And the, in the real, I mean, if you go back and you look at four years ago or three years ago, you've come leaps and bounds. Um, as far as, is your, your product that you're presenting to the, to the community. And, uh, I always enjoy it when it pops up on my screen and I can either slide through a couple of pictures or read something that's positive. That's what we need in our society is more positivity and you guys are doing a good job at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question and it seems like we've almost come to a conclusion here, but I do want to ask it. Uh, could we go back to the first slide, um, with the percentages?
Yes, ma'am. Reading?
Um, well, either one. Um, I'm, I guess I'm kind of a slow processor here. Can you explain to me now in the, in the white, the white columns are from, uh, last winter?
Correct. All of the data from last winter.
And the columns in gray are what you're projecting?
Great question. The columns in gray are also from last winter. I just want to, I colored them gray because I wanted you to see that that group, I want that combined to be 90%.
I see. And so, and then, so the green is also, uh, last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so all of those across the board, you're looking for in the reading, what, a 10% or a nine? Overall, you're looking for an increase? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, ma'am. So, yes. So grade five reading, uh, the goal there would be 17%.
At the mastery level.
And the green.
So we want 90% of our students to be at proficiency, which is average on there or above. And then we want to grow that mastery level by 10%.
Okay, thank you, I understand that now.
If I went through that too, probably just kind of glossed it.
I just, you know, must have, I just wasn't processing it right.
That's okay, there's a lot of, it's a big table there, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else have anything? We thank you, middle school.
Well, we thank you. Happy Board of, uh, Education appreciation. We, you should know that, how, how much everybody appreciates the work that you do too.
Well, thank you.
We acknowledge you for that as well, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you and we appreciate you coming in.
Very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
That was very informative. John, your Chair of Policy Committee, would you like to, um, report on policy committee at this time?
Should we do that now or should we wait till the item?
We had to go out of order.
Um. Well, I think I'd rather have you do it now, if you don't mind.
While he's getting ready, can I say one thing?
Yes.
The Boys Varsity Team is up 1-0 right now. Soccer. Just in case anyone wanted to know.
So to keep me on where it is, what number is it?
Oh, it's way in the back, it's, um.
Wow, it's over here.
Last. Sandra? Yes? Izzata?
We can't hear you down here.
Which one is it?
We can hear Mike, but we can't hear you. And I can't hear Linda.
All right, well, we'll move.
Jason says he can hear you.
Is this better?
So is it my, it must be my computer or?
Are your, your phones plugged in?
Yeah.
What number is that?
Yeah, but I was looking for it and I'm not finding it.
The, um, policy one.
Going to do that.
12.
Foolish me, I was looking for the screen.
Well, it all goes together.
Okay, this dinosaur has been educated, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, am I on?
Yes, John.
All right. Are we all okay? We had a policy meeting, um, a while ago on the, uh, 23rd of September. And we were talking about, uh, some policies, but we, specifically on policy 1211 has to do with, um, a student, um, either student council president. Every two years has to be, uh, the voters have to say it's okay to have, uh, that person sit on the school board as a non-voting member. We talked about that last time and the general consensus was that, um, we like to have a change of some type, to more suit the situation of the, that we felt would be more important to the board and to our student body. So we discussed it and, um, the bottom line is that we'd like to delete policy 1211 and in, in fact, put it, uh, into a practice instead of a policy. If we have it as a practice, we could put it in our, uh, handbook for the school board and it would have the same effect as a policy. And we can make it more general. Uh, we, we thought that we would like to have the board approve, um, or talk about having groups of students in, uh, not necessarily just one student like we had Abby tonight, but have a number of students from the elementary, uh, middle and high school at different times during the year. And that would be in our policy book and that would make it official and we would strive to get that done. Uh, we would like to have, uh, Mrs. Egner, she's in, she's in charge of the, of the handbook and, uh, some language could be put in there, uh, which would then have the force of having to do it. And we would have, uh, the administration of the three grade levels, uh, select different groups. And it could be one student and it could be a group of students. It could be a sports group, it could be the musical, it could be, uh, I'm talking about normal years when we have clubs and, um, activities going on and we could have them in person. There's a great value to having groups of kids come in, perhaps with their parents as well, especially with the, the elementary kids, that the parents can interact with us and with these, with their, with their child as to what they're doing in school that's of benefit and, and, uh, we felt that that was very important. We also have, uh, information that we do not have to have all the policies that we currently have. There, we, there's 35, I believe, the number is like 35 that are essential to have for a school district. And the other ones are kind of match up with what our needs are. So in that regard, we, uh, like to have our, um, our legal person give us the numbers and the 35 that are critical and need to be in there for legal purposes. And then to look at the other ones and see if we need to have them. Uh, there, there is a lot of benefit by not having a book with 500 pages in it and having to match up with everything in that. So there are two different things, so we could wait on the present policies. The policies that we have currently in the policy book would remain in effect and we would continue following the present policies. So that's pretty much it. So, uh, that's for number five A, approval of policies. If you read it, it said the school, uh, approves a deletion of the following policy. So just so that you see the deletion part in there, so when we vote for that, it's to delete it from our policy book with the idea that we will have student and parent interactions by way of our handbook. Any questions?
Is that something that we could schedule into a, uh, workshop meeting to discuss, uh, the possibilities and ideas for the, for the handbook? Or is that something that the handbook committee would solely, uh, take upon themselves?
Are you thinking the entire board should come up with the wording?
It would go to handbook. It would go to the handbook committee, Jason. Yeah. Um, right now, um, questions and, and, um, comments about the resolution.
Well, yeah, that's a, that's a question that has to do with the resolution. I just would like to know what our plan is going forward, once we, um, once we delete this policy, just so it doesn't get lost on the wayside.
So can I jump in as a member of the policy committee?
Please do.
Please do.
The intention is to be more inclusive. So there will be a regular scheduled participation at each meeting, um, at least minimally the first meeting of the month. So Abby, serving as an exemplar tonight, is not an ex officio model. But Abby's also somebody who's very involved with a lot of activities. So in our thinking is that, you know, we would have representation of many different groups, not just one exclusive member. And it would be something that would be put into regular practice. It would be something that as John mentioned, it would be in the handbook and adhered to by the board and the administration. Knowing that we feel like, uh, true indicator of community engagement is to be more inclusive and we don't feel like the ex officio member does that.
Oh, I, I, I agree with that 100%. I just, uh, didn't know if the board would be involved in the actual verbiage of the handbook and, uh, and the idea, um, processing and, I, compilation.
I think the idea was that the handbook committee would come up with the language presented to us as a board and then we'd discuss it. Uh, and I don't think that we, we did not want a specific, like every September, we have X, Y, Z and every October, we have a different group. It was going to be very free and flexible, uh, depending on the conditions. We also thought that there might be some conditions like COVID, that it might not be appropriate to have it all. But that, in other words, I think we kind of got the idea that we would have the administration directed to come up with, like say next month, select a group that you think is representative of their school. It could be elementary, I don't, I, I'm, you know, just throwing it out. And present, those kids would come in and present, it could be 20 kids.
Generally speaking, the board would say what we, that what we want, um, is, and then the administration would figure out the how it's done. That would be the superintendent's job, but we would say we want, uh, a, some kind of a student presentation at each of our meetings. And it would be up to the superintendent to decide how that process would work. But at this moment, um, it will, um, we're just talking about, um, deleting number 1211 from the policy. And then, um, it'll go to handbook and then we can hassle that through at that time. Okay? So I will say that Tina and Paul are on notice. We'll be having another handbook committee meeting and we'll be hammering out the, uh, parameters that we want to present and then we'll have a discussion. Okay, good. Anybody else? All right, then we'll move on to the, the last, um, presentation.
Should we vote on it now or?
No, no, not until, this is just, so for clarification. The audit committee. Um, if, if in our packet, there were pages and pages and pages of the audit, Izzata and probably Bob, um, take it away.
Okay, um, we met last Friday and basically the audit went very well. They said that, uh, a couple of things, uh, the reserve balance is how the state controller likes to see it, so we are good to go there. The summer meals, ironically, they were saying are the most profitable for the school. I was kind of surprised to see that, but, um, they were, it was said that was most profitable. And, but they also said that it has, uh, balance in there that the state did not like to see. It was a little bit higher, but there is, um, there are plans with what to do with that money that will improve our cafeteria system and so Gattitru was good with that. For the most part, the cafeteria was the only thing they found a problem with. Everything else was on top of things and they had to look hard to find the cafeteria problem, which is always a good thing for us. And as a group, we would like to recommend that the audit for 2020 is approved.
Bob, would you like to add to that?
I guess I would just like to emphasize a little bit on the cafeteria piece that our current, uh, food distribution program that we're, we're running does get excellent reimbursement through the federal programs. So we generated a little bit of a profit this past year, which we wouldn't have necessarily had if we had just run under our normal CEP program. So we're taking advantage to look at this time of seeing how some of that fund balance can be spent directly on the cafeteria program, possibly replace some equipment to serve us down the, down future years when we won't have quite as much of a profit margin. It's also important to note that anything with the cafeteria, the cafeteria fund is a total separate pot of money from our general fund budget. So it's not like because there's extra money in the cafeteria fund this year that that's things we can use to offset shortages we might get in our general fund state aid. And on the 27th, we'll talk a little bit more about the budget and shortages potentially in state aid if there's reductions. But I just want to make sure everyone's clear that those, those are different funds and they do not intermingle.
Thank you. Board members, questions for Izzata or Bob? John?
Uh, for either of you. Uh, all school districts are distributing food for students who are in need or everyone really. in need, or everyone really. Would the auditors say the same thing to every school district? Because I'm sure they're all making a profit.
Not necessarily. Many of them are not. As I said, it is a more profitable program. We're also doing it on a much, much larger scale than any of the communities around us. We're the amount of food that we're taking out to our community, it's it's not being done in any with any of our immediate surrounding districts that I'm aware of.
You know, when I first read it and when I heard the interchange, it was almost a negative. I see it as a strong positive. We are furnishing our kids and our with a needed with their needed food in times of weirdness, you know, of COVID. And I think the parents should be thanking us for doing it.
I I would totally agree. That was the intention was to serve the community, and then we didn't even realize till we got into it and towards the end of the summer that the reimbursement coming through was going to be better than we had seen in the past. That wasn't the purpose for doing it, but it is a nice benefit to support the program in future years.
Bob, could you expand on that statement you made that we're serving more than maybe other school districts there? What are we doing that we're going beyond?
Well, what we what what we started back last spring was unless people did a negative or they declined to take the meals, we started transporting the meals out to all students in the community. We didn't make it where people had to sign off. It was they signed up if they didn't want them. And the participation level is just so much higher versus in a lot of other districts, people have to go to locations and pick the meals up. They're not being brought to the houses, things like that.
I see. That's great. I'm glad, very glad.
And I guess I it doesn't have to do with audit, but as long as we're talking about that program, our our service employees have just done an outstanding job going way back to March, and some of our instructional staff have helped when they've had time also. The amount of commitment from these people working tirelessly all summer. You know, I mentioned earlier that during the summer, we were putting out a good ten thousand meals per week, and that's a lot of work. It's been a lot of stress at times, but people have really stepped up to take care of this community.
Yes, I had heard that people from the top down were jumping in to make sandwiches or to bake things, get things ready. That's just, that's something as a community, so truly. Any other questions or comments on the audit?
Paul? Yeah, I just. As a member of the audit committee last year, and I really read that report very carefully, and I want to make sure, and I'm kind of doing this for the benefit of the people that will watch this on video, we had no discrepancies last year, and our discrepancy this year is that we had too much money in our account. So good on you, Bob.
Yeah.
One, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the audit committee, thank Bob, and to thank Donna for her leadership. So as Bob referenced, the service of our our cafeteria, our support staff, our transportation department, a lot of this plan's being executed based on leadership and intentionality. So I see that Donna's joining with us tonight, so I'd like to just kind of compliment her on having that foresight to to recommend that and for for Bob to to champion her cause and to move forward with it. So I think that that's that's the piece for our organization to truly take hold of is that the feedback and the ongoing conversations and collectively solving issues to serve our community, that's a true reflection of teamwork, in my opinion. So kudos to them.
Very good. Thank you. I believe that completes the report. I don't see your name on here, Mr. Poland, but let's add you. Would you have anything you'd like to say?
Sure, I I sure would. I'd like to take the opportunity to extend our gratitude and thanks to the Board of Education. We've got something that we'd like to share with you at this moment. You know, we're gonna have a little celebratory video here, but we'd also like to join with you after this meeting concludes for a little cake and celebration. You know, your efforts and your time and your commitment are not lost on the people that you represent. They're certainly not lost on our school community. So we want to just say thank you, and we feel like this video will will do that for us.
Oh, how nice. Oh. Well, thank you so much. That was fantastic.
Yeah, so like I said, we we appreciate what you do. Your service and the the number of countless hours that you volunteer are fantastic, truly appreciated, and certainly making a difference. You know, it's it's something we talk about, the new normal, and there's definitely been a lot of trying times due to the ever-changing economy, the the state of education, and the uncertainty of what tomorrow will bring, but your leadership and your guidance are truly valued. So I think that as you go through town, you'll see on the marquee of the theater, several teachers pulled money together to send positive messages. So one of the things that I would say is indicative of this board and and what I've started to realize in my relationship with you is, you know, tough times don't last, tough people do, and perseverance is something that, you know, I I would say our community prides themselves on, that and the resiliency. So we just want to say thank you. Your your work and your time are truly appreciated.
Well, speaking from the board, we thank you, and I'm sure for all of us, it's a labor of love. We care about this district and the kids and everyone who's helping to educate our kids in every every aspect of life. And we don't always agree, but we do agree that it's students first in this board, right, gang? Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Linda and Isetta? Questions? This takes us to page six, I believe.
Number seventeen, right?
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Isetta? Yeah, everybody. Consent agenda is approved with unanimous decision. And now the approval of the policy resolution. Motion, please. John? Hearing none, all in favor?
It's a roll call vote, Cinda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Tina, roll call.
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now a motion to dispose of the concrete catch basins. John, second? Jason? Discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions about it.
Absolutely.
I want to make sure I'm unmuted. Will will we need to purchase these again in the future, Michael, when we do decide to start another capital project for the elementary school?
That's a good question, but it's hard to say right now with certainty whether or not those materials would be utilized just because they were so specific. So in terms of, you know, could we use them in the future, the possibility there, will we? I I don't know. And that's something that our team discussed internally. We spent a lot of time over the past several weeks discussing that particular item and the usage of them. And right now, in terms of the liability and the potential hazards of keeping them on site, it outweighed the potential benefit of keeping them for future use.
Thank you.
Yep.
You need to unmute, please.
Was the cost of forty-five hundred dollars for one catch basin or for all the catch basins?
It's all-inclusive.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Then a roll call vote.
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
At this time, does anyone have good news to share? Paul?
I'm sorry, am I first?
You are. If you want to be.
Sure. Lots of good news. Sidney Hall out of our high school was accepted to the New York State Music Association All State Performing Ensemble. So she was selected now by her with her performance out of thousands of students in across the state. And so right here in North Rose Wilkett, we have a person who will be performing for the all-state. I think that's fabulous.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Abby Joe, who spoke to us earlier, another just incredible achievement. She was named a commended scholar in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And what this means is she was in the top three percent of one point five million students. That's just incredible. So well done, Abby Joe. Recently, the Colonel William Prescott, a chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, announced a Wayne County History Award winners, and there were several, but I just wanted to point out that Skyler Fox from who graduated from North Rose Wilkett was a recipient. Jason, do you have an update on the soccer score?
Not yet.
Okay, well, Mike, are you gonna talk about sports?
Well, I don't know how it's going out there right now, and I wish I were out there watching and, you know, not was sending the glad that I'm also a board member. But we want our the boys varsity have won their first two soccer games of the year, both by a score of three to one, so I'm really excited about that. We also had a multi-school cross-country event, and we had Clayton Reed finish third overall out of four or five different schools, and that was in a, yeah, cross-country. Maybe many of you read this, but Scotty Martin taught school here, coached for forty-four years. There was a really nice article in the Lakeshore News about him in his forty-four years. And then apparently, I I had missed these earlier, but I want to take an opportunity to give credit again to these students who are graduates of North Rose Wilkett, on the dean's list at Buffalo State College. So this was the spring's dean's list. Again, I'm a little late on this one, but I just found them again. Courtney Cole of North Rose and Abigail Gregg of Wilkett. And then more dean's list, Finger Lakes Community College, Kenzie Graham. And then RIT, we have four students on the dean's list. Tess Roberts, Annabelle, excuse me, Ann Marie Durizio, Derek Freeman, and Samuel Matisse. So again, we have students that are really going out there from our school and doing well, and I mentioned again my disclaimer, if I've missed anyone, my apologies. I I relate what I can find. Thank you.
All right. Other good news? John?
One that Mr. Stasky cannot find is from the retired edut, retired educators of New York State. Victoria Converse is a winner and Wayne County, a second-time winner of the Barry Flegel Memorial Act of Educator Grant. And I, too, have a cross-country comment. I saw, I went to the Newark meet, and I was really, really proud of not only Newark, where my grandsons ran, but also the North Rose Wilkett students and the coach. I had a nice conversation with the coach, and they obviously had an intense interest in their team, and I was really proud of watching them. They really with pride for North Rose Wilkett. That's it.
Anyone else?
Cinda, are we doing liaison reports, or is that next meeting?
Oh. Pardon?
We can do, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Why don't, let's see. Jason, you're elementary?
I am.
Would you and would you like to, and I think, Isetta, were you?
I'm elementary also.
You're elementary as well, yeah. Well, let's start with elementary.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of chatting with Christie over the last couple of weeks, and there's a lot of good things going on at North Rose Elementary. First up, there's a upcoming Fun Fall Days. This is for in-person and remote students. It's scheduled for ten twenty-seven and ten thirty, and it will include a variety of fall activities for students, pumpkin deck. Pumpkin decorating contests, fall snacks, crafts for each grade level. So that should be fun for this time of year with our students when it's starting to get cold outside and maybe they're not going outside for recess. She relayed that they've completed the Ames Web Testing, K through four. And they're going to be digging deeper into intervention programs and SIPs with their third and fourth graders. So that's exciting to see where our students are at coming off last year, which was a little bump in the road. I've got two weeks of staff shout-outs because obviously we only meet every other week. But Christie would really like to give a shout-out to our first-grade team. Patty Weber, Joanna Sanmar, Jess Hoffend. And I'm sorry if I get these names wrong. I really apologize. Sarah Mobilio, Hannah Pedengill, Kristen McMorris, Christine Chapman. They all worked collaboratively during the Tier One meeting last week regarding questions about collaborative classroom scheduling and finding ways to incorporate both foundations and collaborative classroom protocols. She had so many good things to say about the way they worked together. We thought that it fitted or was the right fit for last week's call-out for staff. We also have a social work intern from SUNY Brockport that we'd like to name, I guess, and call out and congratulate. She'll be spending some time with us. Shiarra DiMarco is our intern from Brockport this semester. Is she going to be here the entire year, Megan? Okay, thank you. This week's staff shout-outs go to all the aides and monitors who have supported our building with copying, cutting, laminating. They're the mortar of what keeps our school going every day and allows our staff to focus on educating the students. And without them, we would be lost. The things that she's told me and relayed to me about just the small things about going above and beyond every day to make other people's lives easier. It's motivating, you know? People that just go that extra step in hopes of bettering a child's future. And I'll tell you that the elementary school is full of positive attitudes. It's good to see. It's good to hear. I'm kind of, I wish I could spend more time near it. But with having family members or full virtual, I kind of feel weird not be, or going into the school and then going home. So I've kind of put it off longer than I should have. But I guess I need to come up with a couple of protocols to ensure that I don't contaminate anyone. Maybe I'll send John in my place.
Izetta, do you have anything you want to add?
Only that they are still going to have the trunks and treats as of this point for the Halloween at Marshall Park. And I'll have more information on that later, but at this point, it is still scheduled to happen. It's $2 a student to attend. And they've got different activities and raffles and things like that involved for any child that would like to attend either virtual or in-school students. And it's on a Saturday, so won't be involved in the school.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to the middle school. Tina?
Okay, I was able to meet with able to meet with Mark and
Yes. Turn the mute off.
Are you muted?
I'm unmuted.
Oh, it shows muted on the screen. There you go.
I unmuted it. Okay. Starting over. So I met with Mark. Can I, I can't take him off. We had been emailing back and forth. We were able to coordinate a meeting. So I went in and met with him, gave me a quick tour of how the my old office was at the elementary school. So it was kind of fun to see that. And we kind of set up some ideas as to what he would like projected out about what's happening at the middle school and how I would be invited in. He offered to be on the leadership committee. I didn't feel like that was really appropriate. But we did talk about some different options. He's very open to anything we have. He did let me know, though, a teacher, Sarah Osher, Oshker. Fifth-grade teacher, she's been in the district five to six years, had indicated the collaborative classroom, a new ELA program they're using was working very well. They're seeing huge gains in both reading and writing. But in addition to that, some extra gains in using Reactor Raps, and Megan can probably explain these better. Their test-taking techniques, but she's using them in addition in the classroom across curriculum. So just in answering questions and problem-solving, and has seen some real benefits. What's kind of nice is this is the same program Jason just mentioned. So it's it's nice to see that we're using the same programs and we're using them from building to building and not having them stop when they change. Because that's, that's great. Additionally, I talked with a few teachers at the middle school, and they're very optimistic. They're encouraged with how things are going, excited to see what's happening. So it's good. It's gone well.
Great. Wonderful. Paul, would you like to, do you have anything from the high school?
Yes, a couple of things. So I've been able to go and meet at the greeting time or at the arrival time for all the students. And it's really been kind of fun to watch the students come in and the staff come in. And what I noticed in having had students of my own at the school at that high school level, the students pretty much come in and, you know, they're I think half of them are half asleep because they're teenagers. And they sort of just come on in and head for the class. And I kind of, I admire that because remember, we're not supposed to be congregating. We're not supposed to be doing a lot of chatting. So high school students are really important with that. They're wearing masks and they just come in and head for their classroom. It's hard to even get anyone's attention to say hello. The counter to that, though, is the staff, who seem to be fully alert and really excited. And I would point out that as I was walking into the school the last time, the teacher joined up just because we happened to be walking in the same place at the same time. And he's, and I, you know, so of course I chatted, "How are you doing?" And he said, "You know, what's amazing is that despite all of this, we're getting the job done." And I think that's a real compliment to the high school staff. I also just wanted to mention that Jessica Graham is the parent liaison and that we've been communicating back and forth too. So I think we have a good relationship there at the high school, and everything that I see is very positive.
Oh, it's good to hear. Very good. Things are going well. And thank you, Mr. Pollan, for your leadership and positive attitude here to keep things moving in the right direction. Thank you. I think that concludes our board meeting for tonight. Could I have a motion for adjournment? Izetta and Linda? All in favor? Motion is approved by 100%. Thank you and good night.